Everyone is here other than Mr. McAvoy.
I just sent him the link again. He was gonna try it again.
Okay.
Dando's here, Laurie's here. Dr. Seinfeld, Ms. Nolan, Dr. Roth, Cipriani, who are we missing? Mr. Ms. Castor Giovanni, is she here?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, I don't see you, sorry. Ms. Kowalski's here. Mr. McAvoy. Someone got their phone or something near it?
Oh, that's me.
Mr. McAvoy, I believe, is here.
I'm here.
Okay, great. We have everybody?
Well, I don't know where Alix just went.
I think she was having a problem with her phone.
Okay. Where's Mary Ann Santos?
I'm here.
There you go.
Correspondence, I'm gonna go, you're not gonna see me for a second, but you can hear me, right?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, should I start with the correspondence?
We have to, I think we need to call them. Yes, Mr. Mc, Mr. Cronin, you ready to call the meeting to order?
I am.
I think everybody's here now.
Okay. So we'll call the meeting to order? We do the pledge?
Yeah.
Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Okay. We have any comments or report from the Board of Education and Correspondents? Ms. Santos?
Yes, we do.
Thank you.
We have correspondents from 426, Mr. and Mrs. Mita. It's regarding virtual learning. We have one on email on 427 from Joanne Duke regarding online learning. We have one from 427, an email from Mr. and Mrs. McKenna regarding digital learning. We have one from Grace Serby on 517 regarding school budget. We have one on 518 from Ms. Galasso regarding senior class account. And then we have another one from Grace, Ms. Grace Serby regarding enrollment, and that one was received on 518.
Thank you, Ms. Santos. Budget hearing.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I'll just start this off by sharing that we are, the ballots have been mailed as of today. I'd like to thank Ms. Nolan and Mr. Butler for all their assistance with this new process for this year. We are very proud to present a budget that is below the tax levy limit and maintains and enhances programs for our students. I know the Board of Education deliberated over our budget discussions numerous times about the enhancements that we were proposing and which ones to consider, and only made the decision based on which are closest to the students in the classroom. And so I turn this over to Mr. Cipriani to share an overview of the proposed budget as well as the process. And this is in the PowerPoint that was in the board's packet and is also posted on the district website.
Yes, thank you very much, Dr. Seinfeld. I'd like to say that this is a very fiscally responsible budget. It maintains our financial strength going forward. We have a low levy increase of 1.53%. As you know, if the transportation proposition for $160,000 is passed, then that 1.53% goes up to 1.83%, which is still significantly below the tax cap of 2.05%. We had some important enhancements to the budget such as Mandarin, additional fourth grade teacher, a beginning of a strings program and a supplement to the science research program in terms of a partial FTE. We, you know, we've looked at our revenues. Obviously, there's questions on state aid. Thankfully, as I've been saying, we only get 6% of our overall revenue from state aid. So we're in good shape in terms of non-dependence on state aid. You know, we talk about our state aid ratios. Our building aid ratio is the lowest of 10%. A district can't get less than that. Our transportation aid ratio, 6.5%. The numbers don't get lower than that, so we're very independent when it comes to state aid, which in this case is a good thing. You know, we've been looking at, you know, we continue to monitor revenues. We look at them on a regular basis. Again, we believe we're in good shape for next year. The settlement of the teachers' contract has definitely helped us for next year, which I'm very happy about. We had some, some capital reserve projects that we approved. We approved air conditioning at the high school, upgrading of two playground surfaces at Vernon, which were, which were taken out two years ago because we needed some money to supplement the fieldhouse, and the expansion of our one-to-one initiative. So those are all really important projects. And speaking to our, our financial strength, as you know, a couple of years ago, we were able to create a technology reserve, and very few districts have that. And no better time than now to expand that one-to-one initiative and have those devices for our students. So, so absolutely good stuff. As Dr. Seinfeld was talking about, the, the very different process this year with the mail-in of the ballots. And, you know, we expect all those ballots to be out, going out tomorrow. And again, thanks to Mr. Butler and Ms. Nolan for all their tireless work to get that done. The budget brochure, we expect to be in homes next week and a six-day notice at home six days prior to the budget vote, which this year would be June 3rd. Basically, as I said, you know, our, our budget is, preserves all educational programs, we're well below the cap. That's important. One thing that we do have is if the budget does fail twice, then we, we may have to go to a contingent budget, which would be about a reduction of approximately $800,000, which would mean a 0% tax levy. So we're hoping that we don't have to go there. But, you know, if we have to, we will, you know, we'll make the necessary reductions. And the propositions, obviously, we have all of our capital reserve, our technology reserve projects, the budget, the reduction of our transportation limits, the library budget, and we have two members running for Mrs. Dando's seat, Mr. Gervosi and Mr. LaCaprio. So that's, that's an overall summation of where we are in terms of the budget. And we're just, we know that June 9th is gonna be a very exciting day that we're waiting for.
Thank you, Mr. Cipriani.
Thank you.
Just as a reminder, if anybody is eligible but not yet registered to vote, it's very important that you exercise your right to vote, and the information is all available on the district website to do so. And ballots must be received by June 9th at 5:00 PM in order for your vote to count. So thank you, thank you.
I have a question.
I have one question. Go ahead. Mike, John, did you have a question?
Yeah, sure. Quick, quick question. So does the ballot stipulate that it must be sent by U.S. mail? And what if it, what if someone does want to drop it off at the high school, even though it's self-stamped?
Ms. Sadowski, could you opine on that? I know the legal guidance we received was that it's by mail. Ms. Sadowski, if somebody does drop off the ballot, could you respond to that, please?
So there's nothing in the framework for this election that says that it cannot be dropped off, but it's clearly the intent of the state that they be made. We do have some districts that are setting up drop boxes in the event that somebody wants to drop a ballot off, but our recommendation is that you try to avoid that.
So, so Dr. Seinfeld, with that being said, have we made any provisions for Dropbox in case?
We have, basically, as we talked about at the, the last time, I believe, we discussed this, based on legal guidance, we were planning to not do that and stick with just the mail. If the board would like us to consider that, I certainly can. But we were going with the guidance from our attorneys that it needs to be mailed in.
Okay.
Ms. Cipriani, I have one question.
Yes.
So in your presentation, you had stated that property taxes payments were delayed and that we would possibly need a tan, and that rates were very low. I thought maybe the, you could just address that to the public?
Sure, right now, a tan, the rate probably between 0.9 and 1.2%, so around 1%. Right now, we've collected 19, well, the next payment of Friday, we should be at 19 million out of 23.5 million that is due to us. So, so the, the payment rate has increased from the 65% that they had, and, and we were told that we should be made whole by the end of June. So I'm trying to navigate our cash flow. We're in a good place in cash flow. I don't wanna borrow too much because there's arbitrage laws in terms of what we're allowed to borrow and use. So I'm trying to navigate very carefully the amount that we borrow. We normally borrow $5.2 million of tans. And the good thing about this is that, you know, we could, within three to five weeks, easily get money if we need it. So I'm sort of waiting to see what happens in the next few weeks with the June payment. If we're up to date with the June payment, I would be less aggressive with the amount that, that we're gonna borrow. So I'm looking to see what the cash flow is in a couple of weeks. But the good thing is that rates are low and the money is pretty quickly accessible. We have, like I've been saying, we have money, we have fund balance, and that really helps us with the borrowing process because when we do that Moody's call, we're a very attractive place for, for lenders to, to want to invest in and lend funds to. So our AA1 rating is something that, that definitely helps us in these times. Many districts are not like that. And they may have either trouble borrowing, or they would pay much higher rates because their, their bond rating and their financial circumstances are not like ours. Ours haven't.
What about all the money we've saved from being closed down this year?
Kowalski, can you say that again?
What about all the money we've saved from being closed down this year?
Correct, so that, that is used to fund our reserves at the end of the year. So we'll have more money to put in our reserves at the end of the year to use in the event that, for the future, you know, we don't know what 21, 22 is gonna look like with, with, you know, the whole financial circumstances. A lot, there's a lot of unknowns. But the good thing is that we'll be able to fund our reserves in a pretty healthy way at the end of this year.
Yeah, and then with the retirements, you'll even have more money.
Yes, absolutely.
Does that money go to the fund balance, or you go put in specific reserves?
Well, you know, the discussion about this is very interesting. And, you know, I talk with my colleagues about this. These are the things that we talk about. And, you know, the, the state says that we're only allowed to carry 4% of unreserved fund balance. And some of the business officials and some of us are saying, well, it would be nice if we could carry 6% instead of the 4% because then at the end of the following year, we have more unreserved fund balance. So if a district is in a deficit position, they can, you know, everything at the end of the day, at the end of the year, adjusts to unreserved fund balance. So if they were allowed to put 6% in, say that's $6 million, and expenses exceeded revenues for a district by a million, they'd still have $5 million left over in their unreserved fund balance. So it's a nice, easy way for things to adjust at the end of the year. You know, you can get a lot of the same things accomplished by, you know, if we had to, we have an ERS reserve as well. We can appropriate up to what we budget for the ERS reserve. So we budget about $600,000 for the ERS reserve. If we wanted to, we could appropriate money from our ERS reserve to offset the levy for the following year. So we do have a lot of flexibility going forward, and, and this additional money this year will help with all of that.
Yeah, you'll have to be careful with revenues, though, because your revenues, like the Chinese school and all that, probably will not happen next year, so you have to watch your revenue side, too.
Yes. But the reduction in expenses has an offsetting effect on the reduction in revenue. So, you know, having these retirements, having the TPA contract at a 0% next year, I mean, that, that goes a long way for, for helping us for the following year. So that's, that's, that's pretty big.
Ms. Cipriani, have you had any discussions with Moody's? Because I think it would be very important for them to understand that we are not a district that is very reliant on state aid. We don't, because I know Moody's outlook for a lot of municipalities, they've downgraded. Some municipalities now have a negative outlook. Would you be able to arrange a call with them to explain that, you know, we are 94% funded with property taxes and that we are, we have very strong reserves?
Yep. Every year when we do our, our tax anticipation note borrowing, we have a ratings call with them every year. So it's an annual phone call that we have with them. So we'll have that call again this year pretty shortly.
Excellent. Yeah, because I really think that, you know, our borrowing rate being so low and us maintaining that AA rating has been so great, and, and I really commend you for, for all your hard work here.
Thank you.
Yeah, the other thing is, you know, I don't know if we talk about this as a board, but I really wanna put more money in that undesigned reserve, even though New York State says it should be 4%. I don't see auditors this year really coming down on that, given all the unknowns in the governor's budget and the fact that he was so candid with school districts that he is going, it's going to be figured out as he goes. I think at, this year is the year to put more money away in that undesigned fund balance.
Yeah. It makes sense. I just wanna make sure that there's other districts doing it and that we get some sort of, even like a marginal thumbs up from our auditors on it somehow. But I agree, financially, it would be great.
Ms. Cipriani, do you know how much money that we have saved from this shutdown that we could put into our reserves?
Well, right now, you know, it, I mean, the question depends on transportation. That's a lot, that's a big expense right there. So, you know, if we, if we, if we didn't pay transportation, I'm looking at between probably 1.8 and 2.4 million of revenues, of, of the delta between revenues minus expenses, that difference goes into our reserves. You know, that's reduced 500,000, you know, 1.3 to 1.9 goes into our reserves. So it's really the delta between, the difference between net revenues and net expenses that goes into our reserves.
So it's upward of over $4 million.
Well, I'm talking net to net, but, you know, we're talking probably, you know, 3.2 to 3.6 available this year because of transportation in the budget. But actual net to net funding of our reserves would be about a million to, you know, about a million, five to two million.
Any other questions from Mr. Cipriani?
No.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cipriani.
Thank you.
Superintendent of Schools?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Cronin. I just wanted to also add to what we were just talking about. I was having difficulty unmuting myself, but now I see. So thank you. Ms. Santos, that conversation is happening among my colleagues as well, and that we would expect that the controller's office this year would not slap people on the wrist for being fiscally prudent and looking toward the future. So I just wanted to, to mention that in terms of the 4% undesigned. So under my report this, this evening, I wanted to share information about actually two committees that I would like the board to help us and work with in terms of the goals that we have. So one is in terms of reentry, and the other is more our ongoing and always focus on academics. So for our reentry committee, we've been doing a lot of research and reading a lot of guidance from CDC, from the Departments of Health, from other parts of this, the country and the world about reopening schools. I did send to you in, to the board in this week's packet, just updated from the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, CDC, the considerations for schools dated May 19th, 2020. That's the most updated guidance that we've received. And as you'll see, there are many factors for us to research and consider in terms of criteria for opening, information that we would need from Departments of Health and from the state, and then protocols in every way, covering a number of areas, everything from hand hygiene and respiratory etiquette to face masks, to supplies, to signage, to cleaning and disinfection, ventilation, sharing objects in schools, modified layouts, communal spaces, food service, and of course, grouping students and how to do our best to socially distance our students. This is going to be a lot of work over the summer. And as a matter of fact, you may have seen that the New York State School Boards Association Law Conference this summer is focusing on, on this exact topic. I will say that I think that that, those sessions perhaps are a little bit too late for us to get started with this work or to continue this work. Because what we know from the governor is that we should be receiving guidance from the state in June and need to submit a plan for the state's consideration sometime in July. So in my opinion, a committee that I would love to have represented, representation from the Board of Education as well as all other various constituent groups, from parents to staff, to students, to our clerical staff, to our custodial staff, I think we should get started on a committee to get everybody's feedback and thinking on that as soon as possible. Also, today, we had a brief meeting with three members of the Board of Education looking at the academic side of our reopening and various schedules for us to consider as we move forward into the fall. And so coupled with the reentry committee, I would suggest that at next week's Board of Education meeting, we also appoint a few members of the Board of Education. It can't be more than a quorum, so three would be the most, to each of these two committees. One, to continue to look at academics and make sure that we're focusing our goals even during a crisis, and there's always a distraction of some sort on our prize, which is student learning and student outcomes and achievement. And a second committee that I see as a larger committee with more constituents represented for our reentry planning, and I would like to get both started soon, as soon as possible. So, Mr. Cronin, if it's okay with you, I'd like to ask for up to three members of the Board of Education to serve on each of these committees. One, looking more at academics and how we can always stay focused on that with the board's support and guidance, and of course, always looking at related policies. And the other, a larger committee, to look similar to our district wellness or safety teams, the way those are structured. So I turn it back to you, if that's okay, Mr. Cronin, to see who may be interested and willing to serve on each of these two committees.
And just to go along with that, Dr. Seinfeld, I know we discussed this, I believe it was May 14th. So this has been like over a week, two weeks. So I know there was some board members that were interested when we did this, discussed this on May 14th, I believe, for the academic committee, right? That would be McAvoy, Ms. Kowalski, and Mr. Castor Giovanni, correct?
Yes. So my question is, so we met today, the three of you, are you willing to commit to remaining to looking at beyond our reopening to working with us on metrics such as ratings and out, student outcomes? So that would be Ms. Kowalski, Mr. McAvoy, and Ms. Castor Giovanni?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Okay. And then for the reentry committee, we really didn't, we discussed it on the 14th. There was no, I know, I think Chris Dando had given some suggestions on people. I would like to be on that. If two other board members would like to be on that committee?
I would like to be on it as well.
Santos? Okay. Anybody else?
You know, Mr. Cronin, both of the board, both of the candidates, for me, the candidate and I indicated they had children in younger schools. They may be interested at that point of also joining that committee.
So then leave it, leave it as you have now. You have two members, so you can, you can let one more go.
Okay.
And the way I see, the way I see this is that we will need to form subcommittees of that because there are so many factors to look at, and we really would want everybody's best thinking. And so even if not as many teachers or parents or students or administrators can be on the committee to make it manageable to have decisions and, but if we could have subcommittees that then do some studying of different issues and then report back to us, I think that may be helpful. I, I know the Wellness Committee did something similar this past year and had a SLICE committee, if you will, to look specifically at, at one, one major issue for the year. So that's, I think that might be the best way to manage it.
Just to clarify, we discussed this after the 14th. We actually discussed these committees in exec, which was after the 14th. It was last week.
Yeah, it was the additional exec meeting when we were talking about our move-forward plans and, and.
The first time we talked about these committees was, was in executive session.
Okay, I know it was, it was brought to my attention, I believe it was like the 14th, and I brought it to Dr. Seinfeld, and that's why we brought it up at the exec meeting.
Yeah, I think, I think it was, I think it was, Rob, I think it was put on the agenda or wanted to be put on the agenda through emails, and that's how it came to fruition.
I think it was, but yeah.
Well, thank you. And, you know, just to look back at, the board should be very proud of, of the work that I think that we've done through our committees, and I think we know that there's always something that's going to be perhaps a distraction or an issue in the community that takes us away from our core mission. So hopefully, these committees will help us to have the board still do the business it needs to do, but also be able to spend the time to more deeply analyze issues the way we did this past year in terms of our residency task force, and of course, the way our Policy Committee, our Wellness Committee, our Safety Team all operate, and I think it's really very helpful that then the board members and I and other administrators on the team can report back to the whole board with recommendations. So, thank you. That concludes my report, Mr. Cronin. Mr. Cronin, I think you have to unmute.
Better?
Yeah.
There we go. I don't know how that happened. All right, sorry about that. So we'll do approval of minutes for the workshop session on 4/7 of 2020, a special meeting on 4/28 of 2020, and our business meeting on 4/21 of 2020. Have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hey, carried. Welcome into Business and Facilities Report. Mr. Cipriani?
Thank you, Mr. Cronin. I'm just gonna give a brief update of some of the projects that we're expecting to be completed this summer. First and foremost is the turf field. We're expecting construction to begin in early June and completed by the end of September. Again, so there's some factors involved in this, you know, with the unusual situation going on now that could somehow play into the dates. And also, something like an outside project such as a turf field would require that hopefully we have good stretches of weather, where we don't have, you know, weeks and weeks of rain and puddles and mud and all this other stuff. So, so we're hoping that, you know, all the, all the stars align there, and we get everything done by the end of September. We also have some inside work at Vernon. There's some casework that's going to be completed, casework is cabinetry, sink work, et cetera, in some of the classrooms in the fifth grade wing. At the high school, we have a ceiling and lighting project that is, again, supposed to begin in early June, and we expect to be completed by the middle of August. We are, we have a west side boiler upgrade at the high school that is, again, beginning in early June, expected to be completed at the end of August. The Theodore Roosevelt drainage, that was a project that was approved two years ago. That middle playground, when you walk out of the building right down to the center, when it rains heavily, there's big ponding in that area, and our students can't use it some. it sometimes for a couple of days after there's a big rain. And this drainage at that playground will alleviate that. So that, that's a great project for our students.
Make sure you get a guarantee on that one.
Yeah. Yeah. And, and we are looking also to do, as we have basically each year, to work on some of the masonry at the high school as an ongoing project that we, we constantly do.
Which, where is that going to be, Mr. Cipriani?
That's in the north, northeast corner of the building.
Okay.
On that, that front wall in northeast corner facing Main Street. They're going to be doing some interior plastering work and some, some facade work as well in that area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it, thank you.
Yes.
Any questions?
Just, just one comment, Mr. Cipriani. I'm hearing that the federal government is going to be actually expanding the technology expenses that they'll reimburse the FCC. So this coming year, we'll pay attention, and a lot of things that were not reimbursable in years past, this is pretty big money, I think we get reimbursed forty percent. So it's not just some of the telecommunications, it's other things to enhance remote learning. So a lot of things are going to be covered that were not covered before, and it's going to be a lot of money that will become to us.
I'll, I'll be on the lookout for that. Thank you, Mr. McAvoy.
Thank you, Mr. McAvoy.
Mr. McAvoy, is there any way we can get a list of what that would be? So for example, we have been talking about in the academic committee, perhaps, you know, if teachers need cameras to record lectures, things like that. I would love to know if those types of things will be included.
And what about whiteboards too?
Yep.
The so-called E-rate season just ended, so this is what they're going to be working on this summer, coming up with those, those lists of things. So I'd say it's going to be a two or three months before we, before we know what would be covered.
Would that be an issue with supply?
What do you mean?
Like if everybody is going to get reimbursed for whiteboards, for teacher to get, teachers to get whiteboards at their houses and stuff, like are we going to, is there going to be enough supplies?
It'll always be, I don't know.
Yeah. Well, the question is, can we write a letter to them indicating that these are some of the things we think are imperative for e-learning and that we think should be covered? You know, really be proactive in trying to get the things we want covered.
Like to lobby them, in other words?
Yes.
Yeah.
Just via letter or have the superintendents to write letters.
Mr. McAvoy, could you send additional information on that besides what you just shared, and maybe I'll remind you tomorrow?
Sure, it's the federal government, it's, it's, you know, so it'd be, it'd be on a national scale.
That'd be very helpful, thank you, Mr. McAvoy.
Thank you, Mr. McAvoy.
Anybody else? Okay, we'll go into personnel actions. Professional personnel, resolved upon a recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education of the Oyster Bay East Village Central School District, hereby approves the following professional personnel and civil service personnel resolutions as listed, and it goes to two point, uh, all the way down to two point one.
No, there's another agenda though, I think, right?
Yeah, two point one is correct, page three.
Page three.
No move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I have a couple of items for discussion, Mr. Cronin.
Okay, I'm sorry.
If you don't mind, thank you. So first of all, I would just like to congratulate and honor our retirees, and we'll honor them later in the year and thank them for their dedicated service to our district. I would also like to point out that we have several appointments on the agenda, and some of these teachers may be listening, but I just wanted to tell you a little bit about these individuals. First, we have Megan Galiato, who is coming to us as an, as an English teacher to replace Ms. Hinkley, who retired. Ms. Galiato holds a bachelor's and a master's degree, both from Villanova University, so we're proud to have her join our team. We also have Lindsay Oliver as our teacher replacing Ms. Brala, elementary teacher at Vernon, and she comes to us with a bachelor's and a master's degree from St. John's University, and with a number of years of experience as a fifth grade teacher in the New York City Schools in Forest Hills, so we welcome her. Nicole Turner also for the, one of the vacancies at the Vernon School. Nicole holds a Bachelor of Science degree from Cortland, a master of educate, a master's degree from Malloy, and has been teaching since 2015 in an elementary school also in New York City Schools Department of Education in P S eighty-nine Queens in Elmhurst. And last but not least, Maria Zambuto, science teacher for the new position that the budget supports at the high school level. Ms. Zambuto comes to us with a bachelor's degree in biology, environmental biology concentration, as well as a Master of Arts in Teaching Biology from Stony Brook University, and holds a number of certifications, as always is our goal, especially in the sciences, which include biology, general science, fifth to sixth grade extension, as well as earth science. And so for anybody who is with us listening, thank you. We're excited to have you. Congratulations on making it through our very rigorous screening, feedback committee, and demo lesson process, and we welcome you to an amazing learning community. Thank you, Mr. Cronin.
Thank you, Dr. Seinfeld. And yes, I'd like to say congratulations to the retirees for your time and dedication and years of service in Oyster Bay, and welcome to all the new teachers that are coming to replace them. We look forward to working with you and hope you have a long, healthy career here. There was a motion, second. All, any discussion, Dr. Seinfeld did the discussion. Robin, you have anything?
No.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Carried. Okay, business action, resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education of the Oyster Bay East Village Central School District, hereby approves the following business resolutions as listed. And it's down to D. Motion?
No move.
Second. Any question, under question? Nobody? Okay. All in favor?
But wait, one second, I just have a question quick. I can get off you. Mr. Cipriani, the transfer, the budget transfer, what was it? Could you just explain that?
Yeah, there was, there was some special education tuition for, hold on, let me double check, the fifty thousand dollars was, yeah, we had a special ed tuition placement that we had to transfer money into to cover that, that difference in the code. And that was a private placement that was required per CSE.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other question? So, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Carried. Special services, resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education of the Oyster Bay East Village Central School District, hereby approves the following special services resolution as listed, there's only one.
So moved.
Second? Any under question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Carried. The agenda, resolved upon a recommendation, resolved the Board of Education, oh, we did that. Okay, new business, resolved upon a recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education of the Oyster Bay East Village Central School District, hereby approves the following new business resolutions as listed. All down to D. The motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Under question?
I have a question.
I, I had a question on B, the appointment of election inspectors.
Okay.
There's a lot of people on that list, where are you going to do it and how are you going to do it?
Uh, Mr. Cipriani, if you want to start us off with that, and I know Ms. Nolan has been working diligently on that as well, we will use social distancing and every precaution. Mr. Cipriani?
Yeah, we'll have masks available, we'll have, you know, all the precautions necessary. We'll make sure that we keep everybody far apart from each other. And I don't know if, if you want to add anything, Ms. Nolan, to that, but, but we're going to use every precaution to make sure that.
What room are you using?
In the library.
Yeah, I'm sorry, in the library, correct.
Ms. Nolan?
Yes, that's because we heard from Mrs. Dowski, there has to be live streams, so we need to be in one location, but we will have the space, everyone will be spaced out at individual tables in the library.
Dr. Seinfeld, does everyone have to be there? We need our attorney to be there, give you a ballot.
I, I, I'll turn that to Ms. Dowski. We, we actually wanted to talk about this at next week's meeting, but we could talk about now, who should be there, who is permitted to be there. So Ms. Dowski, could you share with us if legal counsel will be there and what you recommend on that?
Yeah, so we are working through that in terms of whether or not we can, we can be there. And the election is going to be an interesting one because of all of the paper ballots, to the extent that, you know, somebody from our office can be there, we would make arrangements to do that.
Okay, what about board members, Ms. Dowski?
I would limit the number of people who are present in the room. It really should be the inspectors. If, if board members want to be present, I think that should be limited because it's going to be very difficult to maintain social distancing as it is with the number of inspectors that you have and the space that's available.
Okay. Thank you. Any other question?
Mr. Cronin, if you'd like, I was planning to include this on next week's agenda so that we could discuss exactly who wants to be there and how we can work that out. If you'd like, if the board would like, we'll put that on next week's agenda so that everybody can figure out how to best handle being present but safe or not present, and how we can screen that to you.
Thank you. Yes, please.
I, I have one question regarding the reserves. Ms. Cipriani, I assume those reserve amounts are the maximum reserve amount that we could have in each one of those designated reserve funds. When will we determine how much we're going to, where we're at with the reserve fund and how much we're going to add to each one of those reserve funds?
Right. Where are we? Wait, aren't we in the middle, we're, I think we're in the middle of a, of, we have to finish this because that's not part of this agenda.
No, that's not part of the new business, I thought it was.
I don't, I don't see it on here.
Sorry, I was muted.
See, it's, it's under new business, Ms. Dando, C.
It's on the C.
Yes.
C.
Oh, got it, got it, got it.
I was going to answer Marian Santos's question. So, so, you know, the auditors come in, they do their field work, and they close the, you know, they come in, they, they do their analysis, they do their adjustments, and usually they're done with their field work mid to end of August. And that's when we have the exact fund balance number in terms of how much our fund balance is going to go up. At that point, we determine where that excess fund balance is going in terms of funding any particular reserve. So it's really at the end of August when we have, when all the numbers settle, when we know what the exact numbers are, at that point, we determine what reserves the monies go into.
And that we, Marian, is you guys?
Yes.
We usually, I mean, most of the time it goes into the capital reserve because that's, that's really where we, we have a lot of activity, that's where we have money, where, I mean, we had the money to fund our turf field last year and all this other, the other thing. So, you know, a lot of the other, the other items, it's not as urgent to fund. You know, we, we, you know, this year, we can use our reserve to fund the retirements, which is great, but normally, we put the majority of our fund balance into our capital reserve.
Just be careful this year because you are going to have a lot, a lot of money, you're gonna have a lot of money. So I would be careful and, and look at funds like maybe the ERS or whatever else maybe Marian and Michael recommend, money that if you have to take out, you can easily transfer that money out of that reserve capital you cannot.
And again, if we're.
Or undesignated.
Exactly. That's what I was going to say, if you're over the four percent, that's a good situation. And, and we don't have to spend, you know, going forward, a tremendous amount necessarily from our capital reserve, you know, we can, we can have that money in the four percent and we can, you know, we can use it for any unforeseen expenses that we have. I'm sorry, my camera just.
You all right there, Mr. Cipriani?
We lost you.
I know, my camera fell over. All right. My stapler just fell so, okay, there we are.
Any other questions?
No.
No? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Carried. Anybody for the Friday packet? Dr. Seinfeld, I have one thing. I just want to thank the PTA for the meet the candidate night. I know it was on Zoom, I watched, it was went very well to both candidates, good luck. And that's all I have. Anybody else have anything for Friday packet?
I do. I'd like to thank Mr. Cronin, and of course, Ms. Lasher, and our high school team, and all the parents involved with the activities for our seniors, and today's parade honoring our class of 2020 was amazing. And the reason I'm calling Mr. Cronin out is he was in charge of helping us to get some great accompaniment going from Fireman Field all the way down here to our beautiful high school, and there was not a dry eye in the place, so thank you.
Anytime, Dr. Seinfeld. Anybody else?
Yeah, Dr. Seinfeld, can you explain a little bit about the Student Activity Fund for the seniors? What's going on there?
I'm going to turn that to Mr. Cipriani, and I see that Mr. Butler is here as well, and we can, and they could explain that.
Yes, I know we had a request for the, the, the club account from a taxpayer, and they were talking about the class for 2020 and the use of those funds and, you know, what we can use the monies for. I know that there's about a ten thousand dollar balance in that account, and that is an accumulated balance where, you know, from my understanding, and Mr. Butler, I know, has been looking at this in detail, is that, you know, we've had classes that had balances and basically transfer those balances or will those balances to the upcoming class. And that's accumulated to about ten thousand dollars. So I know that there were some discussions as to how to use that money, can we use that money all at once, and, and appropriate and auditable uses of, uses of those funds. Basically, these are student funds, so the students would decide how these funds are used. And then normally, they have, they meet together and they discuss amongst themselves how to use these funds. And then there is a process by which these are approved, these funds are approved, the extra classroom treasurer has approved the funds, it's signed off on by the building principal, and then, you know, and then the transaction can take place. So, so that's, that's really how it works right now. I don't know if, if Mr. Butler have anything to add to that? But, you know, that's really the process of how those funds are viewed.
No, that's a, that's a very good summation, and this extra classroom program is subject to a completely separate audit, aside from the school district itself. So there, our external auditors do review those records in detail each and every year.
Question, are you aware of any requests right now by the student council to spend these funds?
I am not aware of anything on the day-to-day side of the operation of the accounts themselves. Student council would make those determinations when they meet, whether that be monthly, semi-monthly, what have you.
I, I, I'm sorry, I do know from speaking with Ms. Lasher that she has spoken with a number of families as well as the students about how to possibly use some of those funds to continue to honor the class of 2020, even if it's next year, and they have some plans in place that they'd like to hopefully be able to do as soon as it's safe to do so.
And, and, Mr. Butler, how would you be made aware? Here's, how, who would, who would make you aware?
Those operations, Mr. McAvoy, are conducted during the year under the guidance of a club advisor, usually a faculty member, for each and every club. And those, as Mr. Cipriani mentioned, those requests for disbursements come through the club itself, are signed off on by the student officers, then moved up to the principal's office, and then moved further up the chain to the extra classroom treasurer and controller, who ultimately adjusts the ledgers and confirm release of the funds via the accounting that the treasurer maintains.
Because we, we are. Because we, we are still within the year, and you may, you may be contacted shortly.
Ms. Butler, so it's the, it's the class advisor or the club advisor that makes the student leaders aware of what their balance is at the beginning of the year, and they work with them?
The students themselves are aware of the balances at the beginning of the year, when they, they meet, they elect officers, they form a charter, once the club advisor's responsibility starts right there, and they help guide the students during the school year through all their fundraising events and other events that they have planned for the benefit of that specific club. And the club advisor really is the first in, first in line to assist those students throughout that process. Does that answer your question, Ms. Castro Giovanni?
Yes, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions for Friday packet? So, a call for adjournment then.
So moved.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, and thank you to any members of the public who are joining us for our livestream meeting. Hope everybody out there is healthy and safe, and we can't wait to see you in person. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, good night.
Thanks, Brian.